I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Enroll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Carr is absent in excuse. Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by our city attorney. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Heavenly Father, as we exercise the right of self-government that we enjoy as free citizens of the United States, we pause to thank you for the freedoms given to us by the generations of patriots who have preceded us and who risked their lives so that we may live free. We pray for the members of the armed services, for the sacrifices they are making, and that you continue to comfort the families of those who serve at home or abroad. We are hopeful that your grace and love will be with those who have suffered and with those present here tonight who share their pain and loss. This we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our commission meeting. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Tonight, we have two special presentations. The first presentation is the memorial resolution for our friend Jim Archer. Resolution 2019-37, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. Whereas the passing of James Jim Archer takes from us a friend and a longtime resident who loves his family and community, it was unprecedented. And whereas we are profoundly grieved at the passing of a friend, former professional baseball player, public servant, member of the business community, a man who was always willing to lend a helping hand, and a man who has always worked for the best interests of our community. And whereas James Jim Archer served our country in the United States Army for two years, he played for 13 years in the minor and major leagues. He managed Tarpon Springs Chevrolet and Osmo for 20 years. He served in various capacities at Carl Flamer Ford for 38 years. He served the citizens of Tarpon Springs as a member of the firefighter's pension board and as a city commissioner from April 2nd, 2099 through March 15th, 2005. And whereas James Jim Archer unselfish devoted his time and talent to various civil organizations in the city, he served to us as the president of the Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce. He was a member of the Elks Club. He was an active member of the Rotary Club for 38 years. Whereas James Jim Archer, he was a kind, caring, honest man with a great sense of humor and will be remembered for his joke telling and making speeches about his baseball career. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, that the Board of Commissioners with profound regret and sorrow extend heartfelt sympathies to the family members, mainly his wife of 49 years, Becky, his son Jeff, Jeffrey, wife Sandra, and grandson Jacob, and son Todd, and many nieces. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread up on the minutes of the city commission and copies be transmitted to the family of James Jim Archer and the Tarpon Springs Historical Society and the State of Florida Archives. Thank you. If you please come forward to receive the resolution. And they'll also have copies of the resolutions for the family. And if you will say a few words, please. Thank you.
I am overwhelmed by all the accolades and outpouring of love that Jim has received since his passing. I have never known a man that was so caring, kind, loving, gracious, admired, and respected in the community as my husband was. He so enjoyed being involved in the community. He wanted to give back to the city that he lived in for over 40 years and worked diligently with the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Club, and on the city commission to help make our community a great place to work and live. He was a joke teller, and he spoke of his baseball-playing days, although some of the stories, he would say, they aren't for Becky's ears. But he made me laugh in some way every day. I want to thank the mayor, the commissioners, the City of Tarpon Springs for this honor for Jim. Our sons Jeff and Todd, and I appreciate it so much, and Jim would have been truly touched. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Archer and family members, I'm really sorry for your loss. Peggy, you know, you remember that I met Jimmy back in late 60s when we worked for Papasus, when I was in high school. Son, it's been a long time. He was very well-liked, and he was a good servant to our community. He's missed already, so please accept my condolences and his memory will be internal. Thank you. Any commission comments?
Becky, I've known you since I moved to Tarpon Springs and then got to know Jim. He's not only a great person, but was honorable and kind and a gentleman. He brought me into Rotary, and I always appreciate that. So, you know, I'm sorry for your loss, and I just wanted to say a few words about how great Jim was, and you are too. So, I'll be seeing you.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Thank you. I just want to express my condolences to the entire Archer family as well. Mr. Archer was a great man. I first met him at Carl Flamer Ford when my dad brought me in there, and of course, I had to get his autograph because I was a big baseball player at the time. And he always had a good story for me, up and, you know, even until I became a young man. So, his campaign slogan always stuck out. I filled that out on the sympathy card. I don't know if y'all caught that or not, but he was straight as an arrow. So, I appreciate that and all the fond memories. So, my condolences.
Vice Mayor Donovan? Commission Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I didn't know Mr. Archer very well, but I do know that he always had a smile on his face. He was always more than happy to talk about pretty much anything with anybody. I'm very thankful for everything that he did for our community, and thank you guys for helping to shape him into the man that he was.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Peter Lachas, 514 Ashland Avenue, Matthew 5. "And seeing the multitudes, he went up into a mountain. And when he was set, his disciples came unto him, and he opened his mouth and taught them, saying, 'Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven; blessed are they that mourn, for they shall be comforted; blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth; blessed are they which do hunger and thirst after righteousness, for they shall be filled; blessed are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy; blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God; blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God; blessed are they which are persecuted for righteousness' sake, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven; rejoice and be exceedingly glad, for great is your reward in heaven.'" I only had a little time to serve with Jim. We had some differences on an issue, but otherwise, I always respected him because, one, he trusted staff to do their job, to give them information. And he did his best to rationally, with common sense, and good purpose, try to do what he thought was best for Tarpon. So, I would have to say I truly admire him for that aspect that I know of him. But the other thing that I really want to say that I really admired and was, to me, the best part of Jim, was going to football games. My daughters were graduating '98 and 2000, and I had a middle schooler who liked to go, so we went for about five years or so. And I don't remember how long Jim did it, but I loved to hear him call the games. And I know he loved it, too. So, that, to me, is his contribution to our community, to reach out in some way, to spread that gap between old and young. Because I know the players and everybody involved at Tarpon appreciated it, even though there was a huge age gap. So, may God bless Jim's soul. May you find comfort in each other. And know that even though Jim is passed, he will speak with you. You just need to be open to listen, because he is above, and he will be giving you guidance. God bless.
I just wanted to say that to my cousins and know why I started to say cousin Jim, cousin Becky. When Jim and I had a chance to serve, they would mix us up, Archie, Archer. So, we just became cousins. And I just want to say, you know, I enjoyed my time serving with Jim and then being at Rotary and hearing all of the great stories. I know one of the things that Jim always cared about, he cared about his family, he cared about this city. He was a man that would be true to what he said. He stood in the face of individuals who thought that he might need to do some things one way or the other way, but he always did it the way that he thought that he should. He will definitely be missed. I'll miss him, the things that he used to share with me. I miss his smile. But, you know, there are people who live that would always live on in the memories, and we all have good memories of Jim, cousin Jim. And I just want to say to the family, you know, I know that we all grieve when someone that we love is no longer with us, but we have the memories of that individual to live on. And my prayers, thoughts will always be with you and with cousin Jim, so.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Here now. Thank you, Peggy. The next item on the agenda is another special presentation for outstanding academic accomplishment, Alexander Theophilopoulos. Certificate of recognition on the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida presents this certificate and acknowledges Alexander Theophilopoulos in recognition of his outstanding academic accomplishments. Tarpon Springs High School National Merit Scholarship semifinalist and a first Tarpon Springs High School student to own a Cambridge diploma in three years' duration with highest honor. Alexander, if you please come forward with your parents, of course, and I'd like to see Ms. Fadilidis, too. She is responsible for letting us know about your accomplishments. Congratulations, huh? Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words? Alexandra, you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for recognizing my academics. It means a lot to me and, like, all my classmates, too. Everything I do through the school and everything I do, like, my personal achievements wouldn't be mine without those around me, like Ms. Fadilidis or my parents. And going into college, it's going to be hard not being with them and trying to find new people, even though they'll be here. But I'd just like to thank them so much, and thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra, congratulations on your outstanding academic achievement. I'm sure your parents are very, very proud of you. But I'm sure your grandfather, Father Trifon, who was our spiritual leader for many years and my good friend, he's looking from up there, and he's very happy and very proud of you. Congratulations. Any commission comments? Commission Donovan?
Yeah, I just want to kind of echo the mayor's thoughts. Super impressive. I am blown away. I was in the Cambridge program, too, in high school, and I did not get highest honors. That is really, really impressive. You should be really proud of yourself, and thank you very much for coming here today.
Are there any public comments on this item? Yes, ma'am. Come forward, yeah. Please state your name and your address for the record. Yes, come on forward. Oh, okay. On this particular item? No. Are there any comments on this item? I'm here now. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. You begin in four minutes. Thank you.
My name is Jean Denoff. I live at 525 West Brew Street in Tarpon. And I live there with my husband Danny, some of you know him, and our two dogs, Norman and Nikki. And the reason I'm here is because of the water problem that we're having. The water is yellow, might have iron in it, I'm not sure. It causes the clothes to be yellow when I wash whites especially. The drinking water, we use bottled water. I feed my dogs with the bottled water. Coffee, I cook with bottled water. So, it's getting pretty expensive, and now I'm even having a dental problem, and I'm not sure if that's caused by the water. But I just have never had one like this before. So, what I'm looking for is, I guess I've had the guys out, by the way, the water department is incredible here. I'm from the Detroit area. It would have taken a month to have them out. These guys are there in an hour flushing out my water, but within a couple days, the yellow is back. So, I understand. I've had my pipes changed in my home. I've had my pipes changed from my home to the water meter, and the water department was out there from the water meter to a pipe. But I'm still having the yellow water, and I'm understanding that there is a major pipe that goes down our street, I've been told, that might need to be changed. I mean, this is an older, all our cities, I suppose, are older, but I'm sure that pipe is pretty bad. So, that's why I'm here. I'm looking for that, and I'm thinking today, and I'm not saying this is as bad as Flint, Michigan, but in Flint, Michigan, and I'm from the Detroit area, they had problems with their water that were really terrible, and all those people were using bottled water, and I'm here using bottled water and shampoo. So, I'm just looking for some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for letting me speak.
Anita Protes, 901 Bayshore Drive. I'm here because I've called the city three times about Canal Street off of Grand Boulevard. When you start to go down Canal Street, the street is falling more and more into despair, and now the cars are starting to hit the big potholes, and someone's going to bottom out and ruin their oil pan or something, and I hate to see the city get sued or have to pay for repair. It is very, very bad now. It's with all the rains, and also, they didn't finish the street on, I think it's center, the street in front of Mr. Sivlaki's by the filling station. You did one part of it. The other part is starting to sink in areas. But Canal Street is horrendous. It's really bad. And something's going to happen that, or something's going to open up, and we're going to have a big sinkhole there, I don't know what. But now, some of the bricks are standing up, and that shouldn't be. And I'd like to know, because I come to all the meetings and y'all hear from me, when did the commission take a vote to take down the shuffleboard at Craig Park? And if you go down there, the tennis court is deplorable. You know, we had an international tennis player from Tarpon who learned to play tennis on that court. You walk down there and you see how bad it is, and cars are parking on it, and they're parking in the park. Come on, city, we're whittling away our historic treasures in this town. We're whittling them away like a cancer's eating them up. And all of y'all have made promises to me that you would preserve, I never asked the mayor, though, you would preserve and take care of our historic areas of Tarpon. This is terrible. And now I hear y'all want to do something to put the trailers for the boats there. Why don't you rent the parking lot behind the bank uptown? Buy the insurance and tell the owner, let them park their trailers there. They're close to the boat ramp on weekends. Don't eat up our treasure of Craig Park. And I'd like to know when y'all made the vote to take down the shuffleboard. And when I ask questions. Did you vote to take down the shuffleboards? I want to know.
Ms. Le-
I want to know if you took the vote.
Ms. Protes, you know this is not an answers-the-question session.
No, I don't know the answer.
We'll get back with you. We'll let you know. Mr. LaCourage will-
You always do that, and you don't let me know, and you're whittling away the treasures of this town. Shame on all of you.
Ms. LaCourage will respond to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and everybody else. Robin Sanger, 36 Ada Street. And it was inspiring to hear about Jim Archer's engagement with the community, and to me, that's what really makes our town special, is this small-town atmosphere that we really work at. And speaking of that, it's time for, once again, Stone Soup, which is an annual event. This year, it's going to be benefiting Peace for Tarpon and the Historical Society. And this is an event for the community to gather at the Historic Depot, a lot of people visiting it for the first time, to not only enjoy the exhibits that are there, and this year, they'll have an exhibit in honor of Veterans Day as well, but also to gather with community, to gather together and meet- with community, to gather together and meet and greet and sit and talk and enjoy a bowl of soup and, and company. And I understand Mayor Alahuzis, you're going to be there this year and Commissioner Seber, appreciate that. But all of you are welcome to come by and enjoy the, the atmosphere. And we will have this year, American Legion Post 46 will be outside with the Remembrance Poppies and veterans will be there to talk to folks. And we have seven restaurants who've committed to soup this year. One, and I'll just read the menu to whet your appetite, Tuscan Sun is having tomato bisque. The Bayou Cafe is having sausage tortellini. The Original Mama Maria's is having fakie, Greek lentil. Tarpon Tavern is having seafood chowder. Bread and Butter Deli is having fasulala, which is the Greek bean soup. And Tula's Trailside Cafe is having chicken tortilla soup. And Miquino's Agvo Lemony. So it's delicious. We have a, we, you know, hope people can throw us a couple bucks for some soup, but everyone is welcome. If they don't have anything to contribute, they can still come and enjoy the day in the soup. So hope to see you all there and, and hope a lot of our residents show up as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. We'll be there. Pierdolax 514 Ashland Avenue. First off, I would like to have everybody be recognized that Ms. Protus first mentioned the night, I guess after Jim passed, to have this remembrance and I want to thank her for starting us off on that. Secondly, what she mentioned about leasing the parking lot behind the bank is not a bad idea. It's not a bad idea. I did notice about the shuffleboard courts. So I don't know. I haven't been around that way lately, but it's not a bad idea. You should maybe look into it. Now, of late, the US House brought forth a resolution to put in procedures, rules, and things such that there would be fair investigations. All this time, through all the denials, our fair Republicans have said it was the process. It's all hiding. It's not hiding anymore. It's not hiding anymore. Transcripts are coming out. Today Ambassador Sonnen changed his story. But I'm not going to prejudge what will occur. But I will look back on an issue that troubled me. Hundred and ninety-four Republicans, all of them voted against what they were asking for. Transparency, open hearings. President Trump and his counsel to interview witnesses and bring forth their own witnesses? Honorable, excuse me, Mr. Gus Billaracas chose party over America. Sorry to say it, Gus, you've lost your moral compass. I've said that before and I'll say it again. You've lost your moral compass. However, prove me wrong. When the next vote comes to actually pass forward Articles of Impeachment, show us that you are for America and not just a party that's beholden to a lying narcissist. Thank you. Any other public comments? Here none? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number one, proclamation on the Veterans Day. And the proclamation reads, the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation, whereas our veterans represent the very best of America, they have bravely answered the call to serve in the finest military force in the world and they have earned the dignity that comes with wearing the uniform and defending our great flag. And whereas, on a Veterans Day, we honor all Americans who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard, both in times of war and peace. And whereas, Veterans Day gives us time to pay due, uh, respect to our veterans. And whereas, we thank our veterans and their families as we remember and honor their services. Whereas, on the Veterans Day, we remember these heroes for their loyalty, dedication, and encourage all Americans to recognize the sacrifice of our veterans through public ceremonies and private thoughts and prayers. Now therefore, I christ Alahuzis by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim November 11th, 2011 as the Veterans Day. The proclamation will be presented at the ceremony on November 11th at the Craig Park. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation, FEMA presentation, and it will be given by Kevin Powell, Building Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Kevin Powell, Building Development Department Director. I want to kind of give a little bit of a update as to what is going on with our community service ratings points and the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. So the NFIP started in 1990 and it's a voluntary program that communities can opt into, to participating in for managing floodplains within their community. So any community in full compliance with the requirements can join the CRS program. The City of Tarpon Springs joined in 1991. As I said, that the program is voluntary and it's a incentive-based program that rewards the communities that exceed the minimum standards that are put out by the federal government. Nearly 3.6 million policyholders and just under, or just over 1,400 communities are participating within the CRS program. Although the CRS communities only represent 5% of the over 22,000 communities that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, more than 69% of all flood insurance policies are written within the CRS communities. Under the CRS program, the flood insurance rates are discounted and rewarded to communities that meet three goals. One, we want to, they want to reduce the damage to insurable properties, strengthen and support the insurance aspect of the NFIP, and encourage a comprehensive approach to the floodplain management. The CRS is similar to, to the fire insurance rating system and it's, it's on a point scale, a nine all the way down to a one, one being your best rating system. Today, most communities will enter the program as a nine of, and entering that program, this will give them a 5% discount on their flood insurance premiums in a special flood hazard area. So the City of Tarpon Springs, we've just gotten our new rating and we were at a seven in the CRS system. That equal to a 15% discount on flood insurance to our citizens in a special flood hazard area. And it also gave our citizens a 5% discount in non-special flood hazard areas. So as we go through the system and, and we provide all the documentation and of course what this commission gives us by ordinance to do and supports our department, we were, you know, of course, trying to lower our score. So our new rating for the City of Tarpon Springs is a six. And what does that equal for us? That's an additional 5% savings to our citizens in a special flood hazard area on their insurance premiums, which is now a 20% discount on their flood insurance in a special flood hazard area. And now we're at a 10% savings to citizens with their flood insurance in a non-special flood hazard area. So what does that mean to our community? That's an annual savings on the flood insurance premiums of approximately $177,000 going from a seven to a six. An overall savings of about $700,000 off of, of the insurance premiums within our community. So now that we've reached a, a six and we've gotten the additional discounts, we have a new goal. Our goal is to reduce our, our class to a class five. That's going to give us an additional savings of $174,000 on our community rating system, which will go ahead and equal $873,000 saving to our community from not being a class nine if we can go ahead and achieve that next goal. So what does this do? It, it saves our community on their flood insurance premiums. As I said, it was... Anyways, so that's our goal now is to go to a, a category five to try to get the additional savings within our community. Coming into the city a year and a half ago, I walked into the audit that we have every five years. Now that we've been reduced to a class six, now we're, every three years we get audited, which is we're about a year and a half out from that next audit. So by the commission supporting our department and, and allowing us to have the floodplain coordinator, Megan Aria, who's here tonight, she really worked hard to getting our, our score down to a six. And we're really close to achieving our next goal. So when we report and they open up the audit again, I think we're going to really have a good shot at reducing that one more time. So any, any questions from the commission?
Kevin, I want to thank you for the presentation. Congratulations on receiving 2,200 points on the National Flood Insurance Program and the reduces our CRS level from seven to six. And your goal is to reduce it even further down to level five. How do you plan to, to reduce it to five and how long you think you have to do that?
It's going to be through, um, there, there's a point system that, that we, we look at that's out there with the, the community involvement, um, different outreach programs, changes to our ordinance. We look at those and see what points are available that we can get to, to go ahead and lower that, that score. So that's where we're going to start looking at where can we pick those points up with all the activities that are provided to us as guidance from FEMA.
And that will take us to, right now, we're in 20% discounts is going to go up to 25%?
It'd be a 20, it'd be an additional 5%. It'd be a 25% discount. So, and these are some older numbers, but if we went down to the category five, that would be an, an overall savings to our community of $873,000 off their insurance premiums. And that's countywide, I mean, not county, that's citywide for people that are writing insurance in the special flood hazard area.
Vice Mayor Terrapany?
Thank you. Kevin, I don't have too many questions about your presentation, but I just want to use the opportunity to thank you and tell you that you're doing a fantastic job as the department head and leader of the Development Services Department. I always kind of judge how I feel like I'm doing up here in my job by citizen feedback and input and the word that's gotten back to some of the business that the commission is handling. And I've got great feedback on you from all areas, from within the community. So I just look for you to continue to do good things. And if you see areas, you know, in our code or areas in which we're doing business that we can streamline and, and do things better to make it easier for us to do business or people to do business in the city of Tarpon, then that's always something that we would want you to present to us or bring to our attention. And this is a great example of that, I feel like. Based on what you've presented tonight, it helps us with our competitiveness as a city to attract people, you know, to buy houses here. And if it's easier for them or more affordable for them to do so, then that's something that we definitely want to pay attention to and continue to do so into the future. So I just wanted to give you some good feedback. You're doing an outstanding job and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I echo Commissioner Terrapany. Thank you for all your hard work. I know this wasn't done overnight and thank you, Megan. It was a long process and you got it done with a significant decrease in insurance premiums. I was curious how other communities around us that are high risk, what their ratings are. Do you have any ideas?
I think the average rating around us is, is, is six. Fives and sixes for the most part. We were the highest community around this area and we've been that way for quite a few years. So we're, we're finally getting down to being competitive with the other communities. I think the county itself is a, a class five. So we're, we're close to that and that's our, that's our goal now is to move forward with that.
Thanks. Well, I look forward to y'all meeting your goal in three years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, most insurance carriers aren't going around making it easy on people to save money on their premiums right now. It's, it's really hard no matter what program, whether you're a homeowner or a full-service city. So really, this isn't something we lucked into. It's not something, oh, we just filled out a piece of paper, we applied for. I mean, I remember the first time I met Kevin, his office was all hands on deck, getting this done, working on this. So really, thank you for your hard work and I'm glad to see it pay off.
Thank you.
Kevin, please convey my thanks to your staff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Thank you. We are now going to the consent agenda. Number three is the minutes. A, July 23rd, 2019, regular session. B is August 12th, 2019, budget work session. C, August 13th, 2019, regular session. D, August 26th, 2019, budget work session. E is August 27th, 2018, regular session. Four, satisfaction release of leams. Number five is special events. A, Sponge Docks Seafood Festival amended September 8th through September 10th, 2019. And B is Christmas on the Sponge Docks, December 14th, 2019. Six is to authorize execution of contract for publishing agreement. And number seven is the increase to file number 190010 NRS Order Control Chemicals. Any of those items that you'd like to pull?
I'd like to pull 5B.
5B.
Am I correct? Did you say September 8th through 10th? It's November 8th.
5B is December 14th.
5A, I was just questioning the dates.
5A? 5A or 5B?
Well, I want to pull 5B. I just thought you might have given the wrong date on 5A, so I just-
5A was given to us as November 8th through 10th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other?
Uh, yeah, 5B and 6.
Okay. Are there any public comments on these items? Number three, four, five, A, and seven. Here none? I need a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So let's pull special event B, Christmas on Sponge Docks, December 14th.
I get a roll call for the-
Oh, yes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terrapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Special event 5B?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Uh, Christmas on the Sponge Docks is a new event.
Christmas on the Sponge Docks is a new event. Several merchants have been meeting to talk about how to make improvements on the docks and maybe add some new events and bring shopping to the merchants for Christmas, because we're usually not very busy in December. So, because there's a snow place in Tarpon downtown and a tree lighting downtown, they suggested we have a tree lighting on the docks, which will be actually December 7, and we also have an event, a Christmas event. So, I'm really looking forward to this event, because I think that it will bring locals, and especially since it's on the 14th, people may be been in the parade or might come down to the docks and shop afterwards. It can be a united Tarpon Springs event. But, a lot of merchants are looking forward to it, because it is going to be important for them to have some shopping down on the docks for Christmas.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner, the Christmas Day Parade is also on the 14th?
The morning, yes.
Gotcha. That's a good pairing of the...
And this event starts from 2 to 8.
Right. Nice.
Just in information, Christmas on Sponge Docks. Are we planning to have a Santa Claus and all that?
We're going to have...
Christmas spirit?
Carols, yes. It's going to be all gifty type items, hot chocolate and carolers and music and food. So, it'll be an event for people to come and enjoy and shop for Christmas items.
That's great.
So, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any other comments on that?
Yeah, I just pulled 5B originally, just to ask more about the event. Are there going to be vendors there, like from First Friday, or is it going to be similar to that?
There will be vendors, but there will be vendors that are gift items only. There won't be, you know, any other types of vendors, service-type vendors. So, it'll be totally Christmas-related.
Okay. That's good. I'm good with that.
If I have music, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
Christmas music.
Throughout the day.
Yeah.
Carolers and...
Good.
So, it'll be fun.
Great. Any other comments on the 5B? Number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, six is just regarding the publishing agreement between the city and the prospective author and illustrator of a proposed book for children, tentatively titled Buddies from the Bayou. If you guys look at this, the city's going to bear the expense of printing the book with the cost of approximately 500 bucks for 100 copies. I was just wondering if we would want to print a few hundred more and give them to the children over at Cops and Kids and disperse them within our elementary schools. And that's just because if you flip the page over, I think it just talks about, you know, obviously adding to part of the manatee exhibit and the ecology wing of the Heritage Museum. And then, it'll be offered, you know, you can get the book for like $5 and that's just a donation. And then, you get the book, or you can get the book in a stuffed manatee for $10. I just think it would be cool, and it's a relatively low-cost thing, because this is a hometown book, written for hometown kids, about our Tarpon-specific bayous and the animals that inhabit them. I just think it might be cool if we give some books to cops and kids, for all the kids and cops and kids, and then also have some additional books land around that we can fill our local elementary school libraries with, that sort of thing. Because as it stands right now, when we pass this, it's just 100 books for the historical society.
Yes.
How many books are you proposing?
Probably if we could double it. Right now, we're ordering 100 books. If we ordered 200, that'd be enough for every single kid at Cops and Kids to get one, but you could even go lower than that.
And again, don't get hung up on this, because this is just the publishing agreement, period. Really, the printing of the books is in the background, is in the back of, but this is really the agreement, because we have volunteers that are doing the illustrating of books. We can certainly, from other funds, from funds we use for cops and kids or something, have this 100 books they're talking about for their product and their stuff, but we could certainly use resources that, you know, I even have the ability to prove, but another 500 for books and stuff. So, we can use another funds and have extra books, maybe for Head Start, for schools, for cops and kids and that sort of thing. We can certainly do that from another fund. So, yes, that's a great idea and I can get, I can do that as we're getting these printed. I can get some entered in. Again, because of the amount, I don't have to come to you for the funds to do the extra books and stuff.
We're just voting on the agreement right now.
Yeah, this is your, you're voting, you're voting on the publishing agreement. But we can certainly take that idea and print those extra books and go forward with distribute distribution to the places mentioned and others, such as Head Start or other places like that, where it's needed. Make sure all the libraries, schools, everything's have copies of. And I can assure you that we'll do it from our end. We can do that.
So, is everybody able to just vote on this as is? And then, just knowing that Mark will get some additional books over to the youth centers and our local schools?
Yeah, so we can at least move forward with the agreement.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Are there any public comments on the items 5B and six?
I don't know what the book is about, but if you want to buy one, where can we go get it for historic purposes? Anything written about Tarpon, some, there are people like me who like to get them and put them in historic files to have.
There'll be a new, what it talks about here is going to be a manatee exhibit down at the Heritage Museum, and that's where they're going to have them on sale, that we're going to get them printed.
Are you going to have them extras on sale in other areas where we can go get them?
I can make sure I can get you a copy to buy, yes. Okay.
I need more than two. I've got three kids. You know each one of them's going to have a book.
I'll be glad to bring you 20 bucks to get what I can get, because we need to have them for historic purposes.
You got it. I'll make sure.
When we're not here in 100 years, someone's going to see it.
I'll make sure.
I know you will.
Okay. But tonight, we are approving the agreement, right? Okay. Any other public comments? I need a motion for 5B and six.
Should we do them separately?
No, we're doing together.
Okay. Motion to approve 5B and six.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisis.
The next item, number eight, NAB are related. These items will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. The 18B is a quasi-judicial. So, the item number AA is the application 19-35 rezoning and LUA Robbie Reynolds Ordinance 2019-12 Future Land Use Map Amending. And this is the second reading. Senator Turner, if you please read the ordinance. And if you please explain the quasi-judicial decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial, rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Did I need to read the ordinance?
Okay.
Ordinance number 2019-12, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately .33 acres of property located at 721 South Distant Avenue, lots 11 and 12, block 2, Toby's Acres, AP 19-35, from ROG Residential Office General to RM Residential Medium, providing for findings and providing an effective date. There was a legal advertisement and the Times by title with map on May 31 and October 11, 2019. If there are any members of the public wishing to give testimony tonight or anyone will be speaking on this item, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the second ordinance, something?
No, we actually want to do the first one.
Okay.
And then, you're going to read the other one.
Okay.
But are there any commission comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this item? Sted, you have anything to report to us?
No, the only item to report is, following the first reading, the Pinellas County Commission did adopt a amendment to the countywide map to make this future land use amendment and rezoning possible. So, that's the only update.
So, that applies for the item number AB. If you want to read that as well.
Ordinance number 2019-13, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for approximately .33 acres of property located at 721 South Distant Avenue, lots 11 and 12, block 2, Toby's Acres, AP 19-35, from RO Residential Office to R60, 1 and 2 Family Residential District, providing for findings, providing for an effective date. This was legally published in the Times with title and with a map on May 31 and October 11, 2019.
Thank you. If there's no commission comments and no public comments, I need a motion for item number AA, which is the application 1935, ordinance 2019-12.
Motion to approve 8A, ordinance 2019-12.
Second.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisis.
Yes, thank you. The item number AB is the ordinance 2019-13 rezoning map amended. This is the second reading.
Motion to approve 8B, ordinance 2019-13.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisis.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number nine, which is the resolution 2019-33, application 19-111 Condition Use Whiskey Wings. This is also quasi-judicial. Mr. Attorney?
Are there any members of the public wishing to give testimony on this item that have not been previously sworn in tonight? Resolution number 2019-33, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 19-111, requesting conditional use approval to establish a game room at 40737 US Highway 19 North in the Highway Business HB Zoning District, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. Okay, can you please raise your right hand to be sworn in? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn.
And the staff, you are still under oath.
And staff, you are still under oath.
Good evening. Louis Serna presenting, representing the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a conditional use approval for the addition of a game room to the Whiskey Wings Restaurant. It is in the Highway Business District, and a game room is a conditional use in that district. This renovation's will involve tearing out a wall to move into an adjoining space for the game room. It's only interior renovations, so no exterior renovations will be needed. It is in a commercial district, an area that is, has similar and compatible uses. And there are, it's not a historic district or any environmentally sensitive areas. So, based on these findings, the, we found that the application does meet the criteria of section 209.01 Standards of Review for Conditional Uses. Staff is recommending approval of this item, and the Planning and Zoning Board also recommended approval. The approval is subject to a recommendation of two conditions, which is the conditional use will expire within one year of approval if a building permit is not issued on the property. And two, all applicable building permits shall be obtained to include the following. All renovated and existing commercial space shall meet all applicable fire codes. And the plans shall include estimated water and sewer flows for the renovated and commercial space and details demonstrating compliance with the city's fats, oils, and greases program.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would the applicant like to speak now? I'm sorry.
I don't know if you need me to. Does anybody have any questions of what it is, or?
The only question that I have is, this game room, you're going to have kids attending that game room, right?
Yeah, it's just a separate game room with the restaurant. It's conjunction with the restaurant area. And it's not really removing a whole wall, it's just making like opening with seating, like a big window area. And that way, if parents, you know, kids are in there playing, parents can sit up there and look into the restaurant and watch the game or whatever they like to do. I don't think kids will be up there unsupervised.
Is that area going to be supervised by an adult?
I would hope if somebody's kids were there, that they were going to be watched by their parents, yes. I mean, I couldn't imagine kids going in there and playing by themselves. It's not... I don't know.
Any other, any other questions?
Are there any members of the public wishing to give any comments on this application tonight? Mr. Mayor?
Any other commission comments? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisis.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We're now going to miscellaneous, which is item number 10, Fire Penchant Board Appointment. The term of the members, Jim Bolden and Chris Angelo, expired on September 30, 2019. Both of these members wish to be reappointed. So, that's the only term we have. I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisis?
Yes, thank you. Item number 11 is the Court Enforcement Board Appointment. There are two regular members due to the resignation of Carl Demotsis and Annie Daps being not turned out. Also, the term of Bruce Kramer has expired. So, we need to reappoint Bruce Kramer, who is wishing to be reappointed. The board is good with that.
Fine.
Commissioner Donovan?
No, I'm good with Bruce being reappointed.
Vice Mayor?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. The other option that we have is to appoint a person from the list to fill the expired term of Annie Daps. This term will expire November 1, 2022. Vice Mayor, you want to select someone from the list?
I'd select Becky Archer.
I agree with that as well. Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
I'm good with that.
Number three is to appoint to fill the unexpired term of Carl Demotsis. This term will expire November 1, 2021. Commissioner Seber?
I would move the alternate to that position. I guess Wanda, alternate, no, wait a minute, Janice Trainor, alternate one, to fill that vacancy.
I'm sorry, would you do...
We have some alternates below that. I would move, I guess, Janice to be appointed to fill that unexpired term of Carl Demotsis.
Subparagraph ABC.
Okay. There it is. Commissioner Donovan?
I'm good with that. Did they express interest in not being alternates anymore, like they wanted to? I just hadn't heard from any of them.
Usually, it's somebody's moved up if there's a opening.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm good with that, too.
You go there. Okay, we need a motion for that.
Motion to reappoint Bruce Kramer as regular member. Motion to appoint Becky Archer to fill the expired term of Annie Dabs. And to appoint Janice Trainor to fill the unexpired term of Carl Demotsis.
Thank you. Second, any, second, thank you. Is any comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? We've got first and second, roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes.
And since we moved the alternate up, we'll need to also replace that alternate with one of the, with one of the selections on the bottom.
Okay. I'd like to see Richard Profidio. He just completed the Citizens Academy.
Michael Kuskudis was also wanting to be on this board.
Save him for another board. I mean, as far as, I mean, he's more than qualified, obviously.
That's, that's fine.
I'm good with what you said, Mayor.
I was thinking that, too, actually. Yeah, I'm good with Richard.
You're good with that? Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I'm good with that. He's a recent Citizens Academy graduate. He expressed interest.
Motion to that.
Need a motion to appoint Richard Profidio as an alternate?
Expired alternate number one term.
So moved.
Do we have second?
Second.
And roll call for all of them.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes, thank you. Number 12 is Planning and Zoning Board Appointments. The terms for Vessi, regular member, and Melissa Virgil, alternate member, have expired and both expressed interest in being reappointed. Also, David Pentradoni, regular member, has resigned, and he has moved, he's moved out of the city. So, David Koiner has and David Koiner has resigned. So, the first option we have is to move the alternate to a regular member, if we all agree with that. That's Melissa Virgil.
I'm good with Melissa Virgil, but not the second.
Okay. Commissioner Donovan, you say you're okay with Melissa?
Yeah, I'm okay with Melissa.
Commission, Commission Seber?
Yes.
And me as well. Reappoint Vessi? Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Terapany?
I'd like to move Vessi to alternate and appoint Michael Kuskudis to that position.
Commission Seber?
It's fine.
It's fine.
Commission Donovan?
Is there a reason why? Was Justin Vessi's attendance in question or anything like that?
Not that I can recall. I served with him briefly. Nope, no real, no real reason other than I think an alternate position would serve him a little bit better.
I'm going to disagree, I'm going to, I'm going to say no on this one, just because he's, he's looking to be reappointed as a regular member.
Do we have any attendance issue or anything like that with Mr. Vessi? Do you know? I don't understand why we're doing that.
Sometimes it happens.
Huh?
Sometimes it happens.
I mean, this is a board member that's been in good attendance. I just don't feel comfortable moving him. But, I don't know, I don't know if you guys have the votes or not. But I would, I would want to reappoint Justin Vessi.
Well, even though that I like your appointment, Vice Mayor Terapany, I think it's only fair to reappoint Mr. Vessi to continue. So, that'll be two to two. How's that work?
You can, well, someone will have to make the motion and then, and vote on it.
Okay.
And if the motion either tied or failed, then you can...
Let's do two different motions. One is to move Melissa Virgil as regular member, since we already have consensus of that.
Just, but if we can have a motion for that.
Yes, can we have a motion?
Motion to move Melissa Virgil to regular member.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes.
Could I ask a question on this second one? Mr. Terapany?
Sure.
How do you feel about putting Michael Kuskudis in the alternate role that won't expire until 2022?
Here's the, here's the way I saw it. As I was going to, if we just hold on Vessi for a second, I was going to appoint, I feel like Michael Kuskudis and David Bolton offer more in this capacity. So, I was going to make Kuskudis and Bolton regular members and move Vessi to the alternate position. That's how I kind of saw the whole thing. But, you know, obviously, it's not my hill to die on. I'm not going to make a big deal about it. But that's just how I saw it. I think that those two, the two applicants named have more to offer to this position. And Vessi's been on there for a number of years. So, I don't think that that would be that big of a deal to be an alternate. I mean, there's always absences, so he could still participate. But I'm happy to go any way the board wants.
So, I need a motion for that.
I'll make it, but just, just for sake of discussion for later, Vice Mayor, I do agree that David Bolton would serve well for the city, but his first choice was Board of Adjustment. So, I was actually saving that one for 14.
That's fine.
But for now, yeah, I would motion to reappoint Justin Vessi as a regular member, term expiring October 1st, 2022.
Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes. Now, we need to appoint as a regular member to fill the unexpected, unexpired term of David Koiner. This term will expire October 1st, 2020.
So, that's only a one-year term?
It's a one-year term. Commission Seber?
Well, I guess I would appoint David Bolton.
Commission Donovan?
Again, I'd like to wait and appoint David Bolton to the Board of Adjustment. For this one, I'd be fine with Mr. Kuskudis or Richard Morgan.
Select one of the two. One of the two, which one do you rather have?
Mr. Kuskudis.
Kuskudis. Vice Mayor?
I'm good with Mr. Kuskudis.
I also like Mr. Kuskudis, too. Need a motion for that?
I'll appoint Michael Kuskudis as regular member to fill the unexpired term of David Koiner. This term will expire October 1st, 2020.
Need a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes, thank you. Now, we need to select someone to serve as an alternate member. That term will expire October 1st, 2022.
Bolton.
We are ready, dear.
But you're saving him.
Huh?
You're, you want him for another board.
I want him, I want him for his first choice for Board of Adjustment. Yeah, that's his first choice on there.
So, my, my other choice would be Richard Morgan.
So, you want Richard Morgan?
For that position, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like Richard Morgan for that position as well.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, I'm good with that.
Okay. I'm also good with that, too. I need a, I need a motion?
Move to appoint as alternate member, Richard Morgan, to fill the unexpired term or the expired term of, or, you know what I'm saying? Move to appoint as alternate, Richard Morgan.
Second.
Are there any public comments on any of these appointments?
I have a problem with one of them. I like Mr. Kuskudis. He's a fine lawyer. But if the church has to go back in front of that board, I have a problem with him on that board because he fought for the change and to have the shrine built there. And I have a problem with that because that is affecting the historic of St. Nicholas. I'm not saying that he's going to do anything illegal, but it's going to put him on the spot, and it's going to put the city on the spot. But that's up to y'all. I like him. I'm a friend of his. I respect him. But the issue, the church may have to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Board, and there you go. And I'm not afraid to speak out on it because I feel it's wrong. I sat up here and fought to uphold the oath that y'all took and the rules and the board, and it didn't work. And I've already talked to the Ethics Commission in Tallahassee about it. And he's also problems with it. But I did not choose to go ahead and make any charges on it because I don't have the stability to do anything. It's my personal thought. And y'all can go tell Mr. Kuskudis what I said. I think he's a fine man, but it's a little line there.
Thank you.
For the alternate?
Roll call, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes, thank you. Item number 13 is the Heritage Preservation Board Appointment. We have an notification that Kerry Page has resigned. So, we can move to move William Spencer as the alternate member to become a regular member to fill the unexpected term, an expired term. The term will expire May 31st, 2020. Everybody's okay with that?
We'd either pick option one or option two in this scenario.
Right.
And also, we need to appoint someone as an alternate member, one person from the list below.
So, we only have one? If we're going to go with William Spreecher, we only have one appointment, is that correct?
One appointment, that's as an alternate member.
Got you.
Vice Mayor?
I'd go with Michelle Ryan.
I like Ryan as well. Commission Seber?
I was just looking at who graduated from Citizens Academy. But yeah, I'm fine with Michelle.
I'm good with Ms. Ryan.
Need a motion?
Move to appoint Michelle Ryan as the alternate member to fill the unexpired term of William Spreecher. This term will expire May 31st, 2020.
Second.
And that is also to include moving Mr. Spreecher up from an alternate member to a regular member?
Correct.
Still a second.
Any comments on that item? Any public comments on that item? And roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes, thank you. Number 14 is the Board of Adjustments. The term of Michael Eisner ends on October 31st, 2019, and has he requested to be reappointed. And also, Jim Glensor has resigned from the board. So, we can reappoint Mr. Eisner another three years, and that will expire 10-31-2021. And appoint someone from the list to fill the unexpired term for John Glensor. That term will expire October 31st, 2020. Or any other combination that you like.
I'm fine with reappointing Mike Eisner and moving David Bolton to the unexpired term of John Glensor.
Vice Mayor?
Did you say David Bolton?
Yeah.
I'm good with that. Okay, me, too.
Any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion for Michael Eisner to stay another three years on the board, to be reappointed. And David Bolton to take the place of the expired term of John Glensor, which will expire October 31st, 2020.
Second.
Second? Okay. I have a second.
Donovan?
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. And we go to staff comments, Chief.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Chief Attorney, thank you for serving with us tonight.
Always a pleasure, thank you.
Mr. LeCurs?
No comments.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
No comments, Mayor.
Commission Seber?
I have some comments. First, I want to say I said goodbye today to Kathy Morgan, who worked in procurement for a number of years. And I just want to recognize her. She, she was an asset to our city and to the procurement department. And she's also a wonderful lady, and I'm a friend. So, I just wanted to recognize her for her years of service and want to congratulate her on her retirement. Next, I want to say that there's a seafood festival on the docks this weekend. So, we hope that a lot of you can make it. And I invite, of course, all of our residents to come out. It's a three-day event, and it's always a fun event and a very busy event. And then, I'm excited to bring something forward, a project that I've been working on for a while and thought about. And I will be bringing it forward to the next agenda. But for years now, I've been taking pictures of what working docks look like in different islands in Greece. And then, when we were there last year for Easter, I took pictures in Kallimnos and Haki as well. And just had the thought that I really would like the docks to look like some of the islands. You know, most are working docks, and they have beautiful rock pavers from, from the islands, decorating their, their docks and often the rest of the street. So, I've been in touch with the same company that did, that used the rock for the niads, who is importing rocks from Kallimnos and will be presenting to you next, at the next meeting. And we've got the measurements and the estimates. And so, I'm just really excited because I could just see actually more than just the dock area being done. I'd like to eventually see the landing at where we have Epiphany and a walkway around the bayou. But we'd like to at least present just the dock area for now. And I think it'd make a huge difference down there and would be stepping on part of Kallimnos. and would be stepping on part of Kallinos. So I'll be bringing that forward at the next meeting.
Cool. Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody got a letter recently about the Homeless Leadership Board? I just wanted to give you guys a Homeless Leadership Board update as I represent us on the Homeless Leadership Board. What that letter basically was saying was it was detailing the end of the inter-local agreement. And basically, what it just boils down to is the Homeless Leadership Board is gonna be restructuring the way that they're classified. It's mostly just formal name changes and stuff like that to achieve better funding at the state level. So pretty much, the only thing that's changing is the Homeless Leadership Board. Name may change. Some of their technical organization may change, but it's all just in an attempt to get more money at the state level because they're being cut out of some funding due to the way they're set up now. Now, the Homeless Leadership Board charter still details that the cities have that agreement. The cities are gonna be on the board. The cities are gonna be representative. So the charter isn't changing at all. It's just the inter-local agreement that needs to go away to get this funding. In the future, within the next two months, myself and some of the other cities and the Homeless Leadership Board representatives are gonna get together, and we're gonna discuss more about what the new inter-local agreement may look like, if we're just gonna let it sunset, if we're gonna dissolve it. But regardless, I'll know more within the next couple of months after I meet with them specifically on this. But for now, basically, all that letter was saying was that we need to restructure to qualify for more state aid. But in our charter, it's still securing the city's representativeness on that board.
This is gonna become 501(c)(1).
It's, it's already a not-for-profit.
It's already set up as a not-for-profit, but basically, how it's set up now with that inter-local agreement, they're getting disqualified at the state level just, you know, right off rip on first page of the application. Once they see the way that they're organized, they're just tossing the application. So basically, all they're ending the inter-local agreement for is to qualify for more funding and be able to write for more grants and stuff like that. But our representative and our voice on that board is still secured in the city charter, which we're talking about at next month's meeting. But there's gonna be a special meeting held between myself and some of the other city representatives, and I'm gonna find out more information there about what our options are going forward and what it's gonna look like.
I think that's a great idea. I was on that board for four years, and they have had a lot of problem, problems in getting funding from the state and from the federal government, too, but it sounds, sounds good.
Thank you. I have several announcements to make. Thursday, November 7, we have the Sunset Beach Concert from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This is a free event. Mrs. Seber already spoke about the seafood festival on Sponge Docks. That'll be a very nice event. Saturday, November 9, we have the Treasures on the Bayou from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM at the Church on the Bayou. For, excuse me, Saturday, November 9, Robin Singer, she already spoke about the Stone Soup Event sponsored by the Peaceful Tarpon at the Historical Society from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. November 11 is the Veterans Day Ceremony starting at 11:00 AM at the Craig Park, and I'm hoping everybody is available to come. I think it's gonna be a great event to honor our veterans. And after the ceremony, barbecue will be provided by the Elks Club. We have a new business in town. It's Haiti Skincare Studio. I'd like to walk them to the seat of Tarpon Springs. And the last one is, I had meetings with Congressman Billy Rakesh, State Senator Hooper, State Representative Sproles on the Ancla River Extent Turn Basin. And I'd like to inform you that Representative Sproles will be placing a bill in the House, and it will be sponsored by Senator Hooper for, for the state funding. I'd like to thank Congressman Billy Rakesh, Senator Hooper, and Representative Sproles for their support, and I'm looking forward to the next step of approval by the governor DeSantis. So the, the bill has to be submitted before the end of November. Well, that concludes the regular session, and it's adjourned at 7:59 PM. Good night, everybody.